It'll be great.
That's a punch flag.
I was gonna play that black.
Yeah.
Well, off to a rowdy start here. Welcome, everyone, to the November 20th City Council Work Session. We are going to start with a second item first today because that's the most time-sensitive part of our agenda, and that's the ordinance concerning stormwater management. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Peggy. Before I do that, though, just as a reminder, Peggy is one of the American Public Works Association's top 10 leaders. She received that last year, right?
Last year.
And I've mentioned that before, but it's a great honor, and so I'll turn it over to her.
All right, well, thank you. Today, we're going to be presenting an overview of the proposed changes to the city's stormwater development standards that fulfill the requirements of the city's municipal stormwater permit in advance of the council meeting that is scheduled for December 9th, 2013. I'll also explain the ordinance that will be considered, which includes proposed changes to the planning commission's recommendation that were a result of an outreach with the home builders association subsequent to the planning commission's action. Eugene's municipal stormwater permit is a federal national pollutant discharge elimination system permit issued by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. NPDS permit regulations are federal water quality regulations for stormwater runoff that were implemented in two phases according to population and densities. Beginning in 1990, agencies such as Eugene, having populations over 100,000, were required to obtain a Phase 1 permit, while agencies such as Springfield and portions of Lane County, having populations over 50,000 and urban densities greater than 1,000 square feet, 1,000 persons per square mile, were required to obtain Phase 2 permits, beginning in 2003. Phase 1 permit holders are required to implement low-impact development standards and green infrastructure practices in their stormwater management. Currently, no low-impact development practices are required for Phase 2 agencies, yet it is expected that Phase 2 permit holders will eventually also be required to implement the low development standards and green infrastructure practices. All permit holders, whether Phase 1 or Phase 2, are required to assess and modify any or all existing components of their stormwater management plan to optimize reduction in stormwater pollutants to the maximum extent practicable through an iterative process. In 2006, the stormwater development standards, Eugene Code 9.6790 through 9.6796, were implemented. Low-impact development practices and green infrastructure facilities are options. All commercial, industrial, and multifamily developments are required to construct and maintain private stormwater treatment facilities. One- and two-family dwellings constructed on lots created by subdivisions submitted after July 2006 have the option of private ownership and maintenance of treatment facilities on the individual lots or treatment of the runoff in publicly owned and maintained treatment facilities in dedicated public rights-of-way and easements. One- and two-family dwellings constructed on parcels in partitions submitted after 2006, the July date, requires that the private ownership and maintenance of its treatment facilities. When treatment of stormwater runoff is required, the developer has the ability to choose the treatment options from the stormwater management manual based on what their needs are for their development. There are three categories of treatment options: infiltration, filtration, and mechanical. Low-impact development options include the infiltration and filtration. Infiltration facilities actually absorb the runoff into the ground, while filtration facilities include an under-drain piping system that collects the water and then discharges the runoff off-site. Mechanical treatment facilities only remove the pollutants as the runoff passes through the facility before its discharge off-site. Since the planning commission met, we've made some changes to the ordinance. Following the planning commission's action recommending the council adopt the proposed amendment ordinance, amending the stormwater development standards, staff met with representatives of the home builders association. Staff consulted with DEQ regarding the timeline and possible impacts to the permit requirements and postponed the council hearing to allow time for the home builders to vote and provide input on the proposed ordinance. In the AIS, we summarized the changes that were made to the ordinance based on that review that were reviewed and recommended by the planning commission. A memo and updated ordinance, which includes the changes, have been sent to the planning The proposed code amendments include implementing a hierarchy of treatment options, prioritizing low-impact development practices and facilities using green infrastructure. Therefore, the hierarchy will be that everyone look at first infiltrating onsite, filtration onsite, and then as an alternative for sites that can't construct infiltration or filtration facilities onsite, we have elected to construct off-site public green infrastructure treatment facilities that will be constructed with funds from system development charges. Modifications to the stormwater system development charge methodology is being amended through separate council action, but will follow with the stormwater standards that are being amended, and both will be implemented at the same time if both are approved. The threshold for impervious surface will remain at 1,000 square feet or more of new and replaced impervious surface area. Unless exempt, all development permits submitted after the effective date of the ordinance will be required to implement the hierarchy of onsite infiltration, onsite filtration, and payment to construct off-site public infrastructure. There are some exemptions to the requirements, and those include any construction less than 1,000 square feet, interior alterations of existing structures, maintenance or repair of existing impervious surface areas greater than 1,000 square feet, provided that the improvements do not include changing their stormwater system by more than 50 percent. Construction of impervious surface area that has its runoff discharged to onsite privately-maintained underground injection systems that are registered and approved by DEQ. Construction of one- and two-family dwellings on lots and parcels created by land divisions approved by the city prior to the effective date of the proposed ordinance that are consistent with the approved land division application and the stormwater standards that were in place at that time. And also, construction of one- and two-family dwellings on lots and parcels created by land divisions approved by the city after the date of the affected date of the proposed ordinance, which drain to treatment facilities that are constructed to treat the runoff of streets along with the adjoining lots. In other words, developers may choose to take and construct public facilities that are oversized to accommodate the runoff from one- and two-family dwellings adjacent to them. That choice is up to the developer as to how they want to do that, and that's currently what we have in our standards, that a developer can choose to put the requirement at the lot level, or they'll construct public facilities that are sized to accommodate those lots. So in conclusion, it's that while that other code amendments could be implemented that would further enhance water quality, the proposed code amendments do fulfill the 2010 permit requirements. The proposed code amendments will implement a hierarchy of stormwater treatment options utilizing facilities provided in the stormwater management manual. They will include onsite infiltration, onsite filtration, and off-site public infiltration and filtration facilities. Land use applications and building permits submitted after the effective date of the ordinance will implement the hierarchy of low-impact development practices in compliance with the city's municipal stormwater permit. One- and two-family dwellings on lots and parcels created by land divisions approved by the city before the effective date of this ordinance will implement the stormwater requirements approved as part of the land division at that time. The proposed amendments to the stormwater development standards further reduce pollutants from runoff and improves the health of surface waters by reducing stormwater runoff, which reduces the burden on stormwater facilities, reduces damages to surface water bodies from excessive discharges and velocities, and reduces the risk of flooding and damages due to flooding. This past week, staff utilized the Eugene's Triple Bottom Line Analysis Tool to evaluate how the proposed code might affect the social equity, environmental health, and economic prosperity of the community. A more complete memo summarizing the TBL analysis will be sent next week, but here are a few of the points that we would like to share. New development bears the front cost of implementing environmental benefits. However, as properties redevelop, they will also be required to submit to the standards that are being proposed. The implementation of stormwater development standards enhances the sense of commitment and stewardship to protecting environmental health, and the hierarchy provides an alternative to onsite stormwater management when the proposed development layout cannot accommodate both the development and onsite management. And as we go forward, we have a public hearing scheduled for December 9th and action for January 13th. Implementation will be March 1st, 2014. We are also proposing that the stormwater system development charge methodology modifications go to public hearing and possible action for January 21st, 2014, with implementation also March 1st, 2014. Any questions?
That was a lot, wasn't it?
That's a lot.
Mike, I believe you were up first.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say thank you to Peggy and to the staff that have worked with you on this. I know that when this first came out, there were concerns about the impacts from this regulation. I know the folks at the Home Builders Association and Ed were very quick to make sure that their members and the folks in the construction trades understood the impacts, and I was able to go to a meeting, as a matter of fact, where Peggy came and did a great job of explaining the proposal to folks in the industry, to a packed room of probably, I don't know, 50 people or something like it that they had organized. You were asked some very pointed questions in the room there that day, and you did a great job. And so I also want to say I appreciate the fact that you worked with industry folks to try and get this to a place where everybody has it right, and I appreciate that very much. I'm wondering, maybe you can help update me. I know there was a time when drywells were a significant issue for DEQ, and then they kind of moderated their position to a degree on that. Can you kind of update me where they are, where you see that going?
Where we see DEQ going on drywells?
Their position on, I mean, I know we had a need to, I don't know the right word to use.
Okay.
To get rid of them, for lack of a better way to say.
We do not do public drywells anymore. We haven't constructed any public drywells since 2002, I believe, and we are in the process of phasing out the public drywells, trying to go to more surface treatment. It is still an option for many of the individual homeowners and commercial development throughout the city. They can use drywells. And if you are, and I'll summarize this, it is not a program that the city staff regulates because DEQ does change quite a bit in their philosophy on drywells. And the NPDS permit is focusing on the surface water and protection that, but there is another piece, which is the Clean or the Safe Drinking Water Act, where DEQ regulates the, what we call underground injection control systems, or drywells. And what they're doing is releasing waters below the surface of the ground, and then it goes into groundwater systems, not to the surface system. And we have that in the ordinance, that it is still an option for individuals to do drywells. It is their responsibility to work with DEQ to get the registration and approval for those drywells as they go through the process, and that's what they do now. But they aren't going to be required to treat it, any of their runoff, before it goes to the drywall, because if they meet the requirements of DEQ for UICs or underground injection control, then we feel that they have protected according to what DEQ expects. Roof runoff, if it's strictly roof runoff going to a drywall, they don't require any treatment, and so it's a little easier for one- and two-family dwellings. If you're a commercial site, they have a little more stringent requirements, and there is a possibility, based on what their application for development is and where they're putting the water, DEQ may include additional treatment, but they would regulate that portion of it.
If, hypothetically speaking, if we saw, for any reason, a number of county residences that made use of drywells come into the city, is there an impact to us with our permit or with anything that we deal with, if we saw a significant increase, for any reason, of city residents that already had pre-existing drywells that annexed into the city?
That shouldn't impact us. When they started enforcing the Clean Drinking or the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements for UICs back in the '90s, everybody was required to register them at that point, and it was the owner of the facility who was responsible to DEQ. So they would take care of it on an ongoing basis, existing.
Wouldn't affect our permit at all?
No.
All right. Thank you.
And we only permit, we have a, what they call a water pollution facility control permit for our public drywells, and that's in agreement with DEQ.
Thank you very much.
And it's just the public ones.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Yes, Betty?
Is, what are the advantages environmentally of the changes that you're making?
The changes will put less stress on the public system because the hierarchy is for infiltration onsite first, and so.
No, I mean, for the changes you're making from the planning commission.
Environmentally?
Yes.
We, you know, I'm not sure how to answer that question. So maybe Mark can help with that.
Well, I think probably the biggest environmental benefit is the idea of having the city build mitigation, you know, with an incremental system, stormwater system development charge for those properties that can't do infiltration or filtration onsite. The city will be adding green infrastructure to some of our road projects and to some of our drywall decommissioning projects. So rather than having mechanical facilities that don't really address retention and flow attenuation, we'll be accepting an incremental system development charge and building that type of improvement into the city projects.
System development charge for the people who are doing the projects or for everybody?
Right, right. So that's, so new development now pays a system, a stormwater system development charge.
No, but it's going to be higher if they don't have the infiltration.
For only those properties that can't build infiltration or filtration onsite.
Okay. Another question. What are the requirements to, of the developer to show that they cannot do infiltration?
One of the things that we set out at the very beginning was to make sure that we didn't hamper the ability for lots to develop, and we wanted to make sure that if a developer came in and they were utilizing a lot to the extent that was permitted by the land use code, so if their, if the layout of their development showed that they were using all of the land area, we would not require that they reduce their footprint to provide the onsite facility. And it would be up to the developer to first design what they wanted, and then we would look at what the requirement for the treatment area would be, and then evaluate whether or not they could put that on their layout. And that would be something that the developer would choose.
I think part of, if I can just build on that, one of the, I think, the advantages of how it's being set up is there's a recognition that infiltration through green infrastructure is good, right? And that that, from a water quality standpoint, is the best, which is why it's at the top of the hierarchy. And so if they can't provide onsite infiltration, that's where the SDCs essentially will build off-site infiltration, green infrastructure for infiltration, so that water will go over to there, which then also is the best possibility. And so I think the way it's set up is it's the highest chance of getting the best kind of infiltration for the cleanest water at the end of it. Does that make sense?
It sounds to me as if the infiltration requirement would be the best thing environmentally.
Which is what we're, which is how it's set up.
But we're not requiring it now. We're saying if you can instead of you must.
It is a hierarchy, so it is that they have to meet that requirement first. If they don't have the soils or the land slopes so that they can't put it on there, then they can do what is filtration, which is next.
I understand that, but maybe it's land that shouldn't be built on then.
But I think part of it would be is, there may not be any place on the land that really provides infiltration because of the soils, and so it may not be an option for that land, but what we are providing is that you can actually buy into infiltration system, which is then a positive.
And where will that system be? Where would it go?
In the stormwater methodology that you'll be receiving, there'll be a list of projects that will be used to.
So it could be green space along a road, right? You could put a green space along a road or something like that.
Two examples are, one is the project we built several years ago on East 18th by K Word Field. We put in bio swales on the north side of 18th, so that's the type of project that could be funded with this. Or Ferndale Park, where we did the, eliminated a series of drywells, and we built the water quality swale through the park. That's another example. Are the two types of projects that would be funded with that incremental system development charge.
One more. Has a sustainability commission looked at this?
No.
Did a TBL.
We did a TBL, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Alan?
Three comments. One was, can we have the sustainability commission look at this as well? They have a meeting in December, well, but that's on December 18th or six weeks, something like that, so that doesn't really work unless they were to do it offline. So I'll think about that. Second point is that there's kind of three fundamental things that we all deserve, which is clean air, clean water, and clean soil, and this is, fits in that clean water and clean soil part, and it's kind of a fundamental thing. I like the hierarchy that is here. The question I had, which is my third item, which is who determines the, if they can't, who makes the final call at the end of the meeting, if already won infiltration? Is that?
They should have the tools available to them to make that decision and present that information to staff. What we're looking at.
What part of staff then says, "Yeah, you're right"?
We'll be using GIS data that shows what the soil infiltration rates are, what the slopes of the ground are, what the, where the bedrock might be, and then also. So it should be something that's not really guessing at. They should be able to.
Objective, things, pretty objective.
Yep.
By science.
And who's "we" though?
Who makes the final call, Mark, or?
Well, it's reviewed internally. We have the building permit staff that are looking at all the building permits, and then we have land use review staff that will make sure that they provided that information as part of the land use application.
And that staff level then determines whether or not, if they comply.
Right.
Thanks.
Mike, did you want another round?
Yeah, just for a quick question. Mark, are we in the process of decommissioning on public space, decommissioning drywells that began as a part of DEQ saying, "You have to," that perhaps we no longer have to, but we're still doing because we thought we had to?
Well, we are decommissioning some, and, I mean, part of it is DEQ didn't blanketly say, "You don't have to decommission any." Part of it was determining which ones were putting groundwater at risk, so there's that group, and then there's others that are just problematic in that they're not working. So we have some that were put in with new development that have failed over time and intersections have flooded, so we're decommissioning those and putting in an alternative system.
I only ask with our budget being what it is. I'm wondering, are we about the process of doing stuff we don't have to that may be expensive to do?
No, I don't think that's the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Just before we leave this topic, can I ask for an answer? Is it in terms of timing and is being, having a sustainability commission look at it possible?
Their meeting was the 18th of December.
Well, they have a meeting tonight, and then the third Wednesday, which would be after the 9th.
So the question, so if that's something that you would like to see, this is the big you, happen, it seems to me that it would have to get to them this evening, and then they could form a subcommittee or however they want to deal with it so it could be done in a timely way. And I don't know whether you have any thoughts about that that you want to express or whether you need to hear from council, whether they want to do that. I just want, I just.
Add one more thing. So I think what would be appropriate for the sustainability commission to review would be the TBL analysis.
Okay.
I'm wondering what, when that's available. If that's available in a timely fashion, then they could do it as a offline exercise and get comments back and get it to the council before the 9th.
We should have that memo ready next week, so.
So that would work.
So we don't need a motion or anything? Or do we? I'm asking down here.
Do you have any concerns?
Sounds like they could.
All right.
Okay.
Having sustainability from the council, having the sustainability do that, okay.
All right.
Add it to their work plan. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, why not?
They're right.
Okay, you get to deliver that message.
Have to check for it.
All right. So thank you very much. And I promised, and you know because George gave you a notification, that if he chooses to make a motion today, I told him that he would get to do that. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I fully intended to make my motion, which I informed you all of, to direct the city manager to make a purchase offer of the Civic Stadium property using park bond funds before 4J's December 3 deadline. I learned this morning, literally at the start of the meeting, and I apologize for leaving the table, from two very well-respected and well-known community members, that they've had conversations this morning with the superintendent and the school board members, who I also respect enormously, and the result is the school board is willing to delay their selection date, final selection date of proposals by two months. I have an absolutely confirm that 100%, but I know and trust and respect these people so well that I'm going to take their word for that, and I will not make my motion today. If after this meeting later this afternoon, I find that any part of what I just told you is in fact not the case, I will bring the motion back next Wednesday. Monday, I believe, is budget committee meeting, and that would be too much on our plate. Monday, I believe, is budget committee meeting, and that would be too much on our plate for one. I understand that was going to be kind of a long meeting. So that, that is my intention. I will not make this motion today. I'll confirm that information. And as I said, if any part of it proves to be not, as I just described it, I will bring the motion back next Wednesday. But this is really fabulous news for people that want to preserve that property as useful public space. So I'm withdrawing the motion.
Okay. So then we will go on to our other topic for this morning, and that is the homeless policy framework.
And Michael and Jason will be making a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So originally on the AIS, we had talked about, talking about presenting on a homelessness policy framework, and we'll include that in this conversation. But I'd like to start the conversation with just an update into our homeless programs across the city. I'd like to start with our rest stops update. I know you've recently received an, an update from either John or Sarah, but we are slated to have the first site, a provider up and running the first site by December 1st. We are still hammering out the agreements, but we feel that we can do this pretty quickly. As far as the order of sites, we're looking like the site just northwest of Garfield and Roosevelt will be the first site to open, just because that is, is the most ready to be established. The site on the southwest corner of Northwest Expressway is surrounded by county land and will require an easement, and we begun moving forward with that process. And it's not going to be, it's not thought to be that timely, or long of a process. So while we're moving on that, we would like to get rolling on the first site as quickly as possible. I've been in communication with our, the only two interested providers that have come forward, and that's Community Support Shelters and Nightingale. We've been in consistent communication, and we've done some, we're planning some site tours just to talk about logistics, as well as, I've talked with Pat Littkey of County Health, and I'm arranging a meeting between the county and the service providers to talk about, you know, potential health issues and policies they might want to set up at the rest stops. Second piece is Opportunity Village. They just recently released their quarterly report, and have so far, have had 21 people stay at the shelter. There's currently 16. They've had five cycle through. Three have transitioned out of homelessness. Two just weren't a good fit for the village. There have been a few reported incidents. I think there was a total of 17. Only one required police to respond, and that was just for removal of a person who wasn't happy with the situation there.
Say again, what, how many are currently in the village?
The 16. And construction does continue. It's been, I wouldn't say a slow start, but a moderate-paced start. There's a lot of work that has to be done there. I know they're beginning work on more community facilities, such as a shower and sanitation area, as well as the continued construction of individual units.
Repeat what you, sorry, Mike. Could you repeat what you said about the sanitation area? I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're beginning, I don't know how far along they are, but one of the next phases is developing more of a community-style sanitation, personal hygiene building to-
Like a shower?
It's a shower, yeah. Shower and bathroom, yeah.
I was trying to interpret what we were getting at.
Yeah.
Sanitation facility, okay.
Caught up in trying to be accurate and totally lost all of it. Moving on, next to car camping. We currently have 32 sites. Within those 32 sites, they hold 50 individual car camping spots. That's for either vehicles or Conestoga huts or tents, and for a total of 70 people in the program. Of those 32 sites, six of the sites are for Conestoga huts, and that includes, on those sites are 12 huts serving 13 people. We haven't seen any change following council's recent expansion from three to six spots, but we do intend, the flexibility will be good in the, going forward in the future with the program, and allows the potential for more sites. Regarding last winter's emergency programs, for the most part, all of the programs have spent their funds down. If you recall, St. Vincent de Paul had an expansion of the car camping program for $50,000. Also funded was an outreach and referral coordinator for $35,000, and the construction of storage units for $10,000. Shelter Care received $50,000 for security and rental deposit assistance, as well as $25,000 for, to help match their emergency housing match grant. And Looking Glass also received $17,000 for expansion of their youth shelter facilities. In a recent conversation with Egan, they're facing, well, they're entering the winter season.
Day.
Yeah, definitely. And they're having some difficulties. One of their providers has leased up the space, and so they're losing one of their sites this year. And we had talked to their coordinator, Doug Bales, last week, and we'll be having a meeting with him to further see what kind of role we might be able to play. If you recall, there was $25,000 last year earmarked for Egan that went unused, and there's potential to roll that into this year to assist with the site or any of their other needs for this season. Few other updates. Lindholm Station recently finished their remodeling. If you recall that, used $189,000 in CDBG, Eugene CDBG funds, and essentially doubled their capacity, doubled their seating area, and installed a commercial kitchen. Next up, basically November through April, we'll be embarking in our CDBG and home allocation process. No word yet as to what to expect from the feds. It's always an ongoing saga. So we'll be looking forward to get going in our process and setting up a method by which to allocate the funds we don't yet have. Going forward, just a few items on the radar. Lane County Human Services Commission will be launching their continuum of care. Included in that will be their Poverty and Homelessness Board. They expect to have that up and running in July of 2014, but they'll shortly be releasing the position descriptions and begin recruiting for that once they settle just a few more of their procedural items. Part of the talk today was to just kind of launch discussions of potential policy framework for homelessness. I can get more to that in a moment. Following that, following a policy framework discussion, maybe more discussion with a potential local Eugene Committee on Homelessness as per Chris Pryor's past proposal. So during the Opportunity Village discussion, staff had brought a policy framework to council. Ideally allows council to set a framework for the goals related to homelessness, and allows a more proactive approach rather than a reactive approach to issues related to homelessness. Allows them to define their goals and to help frame future conversations related to homelessness. On the board there, what I've done is, we had a seven-item framework in the past, kind of find it down to some of the themes of the last one, which included diversion, which could be thought of as a transitioning people away from homelessness or preventing homelessness, health, safety, and security, both for homeless and everybody else in our community, utilizing partnerships, both regionally and community-led partnerships, where the city might not even be the lead in those partnerships, and any other that the council may want to have further discussions. And we really wanted to use this just as an update, but also to kind of place it in your ear that we may be coming back and talking about a more comprehensive homelessness policy framework in the future. And I don't know, Jason, if you'd like to add anything to that.
So first of all, let's see if there's any questions about the update, and then maybe we can sort of begin to the discussion about kind of what we might like the framework to be, right? So I would, I had a question, and I don't need the answer right now, but I would, I have heard some things about Looking Glass's capacity, and I would like to appreciate an update on what's happening with Looking Glass, have a better idea of what they are doing, or somehow we got to get a grip around what we're losing and what we, you know, while we're trying to pilot programs and trying to figure out how to build capacity. Somehow we have to have a clear picture of kind of the capacity we're losing while we're gaining, and what that picture really means. And, and then I think there is something around sort of identifying where the, where the gaps are, and trying to figure out how we fit into that picture, and what role this, the city wants to have in, because I think we've had many conversations and been pretty clear that we don't think we own this whole thing ourselves, that this is something that we own as a community, and Betty would be the first one to say, we own as a state, and, and actually from the federal level. In many ways, I think a lot of the things that we're feeling are things that'll bribe in our community because of policies happening far away from us. So anyway, that's my two cents to start the conversation. I've got Mike, and then I've got Chris, and then I've got George, and then I've got Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. I, my questions are around a, some, one of your comments on the update, it touches to an email I sent yesterday, and it also folds in with a motion that I think that George might make here, Council Polling might make. And it's around the issue of liability. Now, I sent an email yesterday asking about public health issues, and one of the things you just mentioned was that the county's public health folks were asking about this, and you've set up a meeting with the providers, or the two potential providers. That kind of discussion makes it sound like that the issues around, you know, infectious disease and TB and things that can happen in that, that can happen in environments like that, will be the responsibility of the providers. So I'm, my question is, what's the city's responsibility and liability, considering it's, it's our land and we've set up this facility? What's our liability and responsibility for the issues around public health? Because I think the mayor might be right. This, this is a regional issue, and I think the county may want to have a closer conversation with us around some of this stuff.
Let me start with talking about the liability question. On the responsibility question, there's both a legal component to that question, as well as a policy component. I'll address the legal component. I'm not sure if Mike, or Jason, or John want to address the, the policy component. From a legal perspective, if there's some kind of infections, disease outbreak at one of these sites, do we think there's any liability for the city? No. The way this program is being set up is we are, in essence, authorizing a provider to, it's not really rent our land, because we're not getting any rent in, in response to what we're doing, but it's to use the land to allow up to 15 people to stay there. Just doing that, and really, we're not doing anything other than that, other than providing some conditions under which they have to operate.
Does the lack of consideration affect the law at all?
It's, we are, it affects how the analysis may play out in a court case. I mean, if somebody tries to sue us, we have, I mean, there are a number of different defenses that we would have, and I think I talked about some of those the last time the council was having a conversation about this, including the one in the Oregon Torque Claims Act that deals with what are sort of discretionary-type decisions made at a policy level. And it doesn't get any higher in a policy context than the council. And what you have decided is, in balancing the, the risks and the benefits of allowing this kind of establishment, and trying to create it in a way where the city's monetary output is as close to zero as possible, you get to make those calls, and we think that if somebody tries to sue the city, we get to say, "Sorry, we set this up, balancing the pluses, the minuses, the costs, the benefits. The council made a policy call that although there are some risks, the benefits outweigh those risks." There's, there's nothing that we have done to suggest to people who show up on those sites that the city is actually taking responsibility for ensuring that there are no infectious disease outbreaks, any more than when the council authorized the Occupy Eugene folks to be at the Washington Jefferson. Never got any suits out of that. If anybody had ever filed suit, our analysis was, we win on those because, again, all we did, all you did, was to say that people could use that property, or actually, what you said is that the people would not be cited for prohibited camping for that. So-
It's different if somebody falls down and breaks their leg, though, right?
Yes, in the sense that, let's suppose at one of the sites that there was a sprinkler head that was, you know, this much above the ground, something that we had affirmatively put in.
Right.
There we would have some culpability. So for something like that, yes. But the sites, I mean, unless there's something like that where the, the cause is something we had done. You know, if we go in and we grade the land and we create a big hole, and then somebody falls, and because of that hole at night, they couldn't see it, then there's at least the possibility that there would be that kind of liability. I mean, there's some other defenses-
So from that perspective, liability issues around the Opportunity Village are probably more so than these tent camping sites?
Yes, and for Opportunity Village, one of the requirements that the council established for that is that there would be an insurance policy that would protect the city. And so that was part of that agreement. Those are also set up to be, not permanent, but it's a year, 14, 16-month arrangement. The way these are being set up, it's, yeah, we'll let you use it, and as long as there aren't any problems, you can continue to use it up until, I think, it expires the end of March. But we also, if there are problems and they're not addressing those problems, the city manager has the authority to basically terminate the contract, or terminate the agreement, it's not really a contract, on 24 hours' notice. So if there are problems that are developing and the provider doesn't correct them, then we can say, "You're not allowed to be on this property anymore."
These are our camps, though, right? I mean, as a city, aren't they?
It depends on, again, it depends on whether you're asking that as a legal question or as a policy question. As a legal question, my answer would be no. As a policy question, I don't know what their answer will be.
Well, I'd like to hear that, because I guess my, like I said, my next question is, do we have a responsibility to do a thorough job around issues of community health, prevention?
What I, what I heard from Glenn is that's a policy call, not a legal call.
Well, I'm asking for a recommendation.
Oh.
I'll go ahead.
Honestly, I, well, as far as in the agreements, we have no language written or drafted on, on the health. I think, and I can't speak for the providers, but I think it's safe to assume that city staff aren't looking to create an environment where people are spreading infectious diseases. Is that why we had the original meeting with, with the county?
But I mean, they also proactively working to prevent that.
I think by facilitating this meeting between the county and the service providers, they'll gain a better understanding of what some of the risks are and what potential protocols they can, they can launch in the camps. Dr. Pat Littkey has some examples of successful camp protocols that have been done in other cities, and is more than willing to share them. And I know he's continuing to do research into those. So I'm, I think it's safe to say that the providers would be really interested in that conversation.
And so it will be, well, I'm trying to make sure we're clear on this, so if there's an issue later, we know who should be accountable in those circumstances, okay? So I'm hearing you say that it should be the provider's responsibility to make sure that adequate work is done around disease prevention. Do I have that right?
Yes, and I, and I think they have a responsibility to ensure their camp is safe and healthy. And at the end of the day, if it's not, then our option is 24-hour notice to shut it down. And so the, the model in this case is, is to ask the community through these providers to take responsibility and accountability for, in this case, a camp of up to 15 folks. And what we will do is issue the equivalent of the CCRs, you know, homeowners' CCRs, which is an agreement. And if, and if it, if they maintain that kind of an environment on the camp, then- then they can continue. If they don't, then we have the option of shutting it down. But the accountability is intended to be for the, towards the providers.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to let you know, I have Chris and then George Polling and then Claire and then Greg and then George Brown. Chris.
Thank you. I will just actually start on the presentation piece because it is in three parts. And the piece I want to specifically talk about is when we talk about the 2012, 2013 programs, there's a number of them listed here. Some of them, their funding is about to run out. And to the question of a degree of certainty, because that involves hiring staff, it involves having infrastructure in place, those are all funded with one-time money that the council has allocated. So the question I'm posing is, is there something we need to do in advance of the end of the calendar year to provide them with the knowledge of whether or not that one-time money is going to be reauthorized by the council? Do we need to do something to indicate that that money is going to be available for the balance of the winter? Because if we get to January and their funding is not in place, they'll lay off staff and close down programs. So is there something that we may need to do, get an amount, get an authorization going so that we can ensure the continuity of those programs for the balance, at least of the winter? I realize it's somewhat related to our budget discussion, but it has a little bit more immediacy in that we're talking about some programs that will sunset at the end of the year. If we knew what those were and what the amounts were, we may want to be kind of thoughtful and deliberate. And I realize it's one-time money, but even as one-time money, we need to ensure that there's continuity here. So we may want to act sooner rather than later.
What we can do is provide you the information, then you can choose to do what you want with that. I'm trying to remember when supplemental budget one shows up.
December 9th.
Yeah.
And that could be an option if you choose to continue the funding of that. What we can do is provide information and then of course you can make your choice on the appropriation of dollars if you choose to do that.
That would be perfect. And as part of a supplemental budget discussion, it seems like the appropriate place to do that. But I wanted to get on people's radar screens so that we knew that there were a couple of things that had some immediacy that we would want to deal with as we continue even the longer term conversation. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Does it run out in January?
And if I could just, that's sort of, kind of like what I was talking about, somehow keeping track of what's coming and going all the time in a way that we eventually, that probably should be part of the commission's role or something. But, but at least for now, we need to have that kind of information. So we, we know what, what we're doing to try to keep what we have, much less add anything more to it in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Next up is George Polling.
Thank you. At our last meeting in reference to the, excuse me, the rest stops, I had mentioned the fact that I was curious as to looking into requiring a liability insurance. And what I was looking at was requiring the providers to have something equal to or similar to what St. Vinnie has for the car camps or the churches that host the car camps. So I asked Glenn to put together a motion for me. I, I'm not even going to try to explain the legalese behind why the motion's worded the way it is. But my concern is what everybody else has been talking about, accountability and responsibility. I mean, there are certain things that the city is going to be accountable and responsible for on these sites. To, to put these rest stops in the one site to start off with without holding the provider accountable and responsible for what occurs, I think is absolutely wrong. I think, I think that what is necessary is some sort of a liability insurance when in the event, something negative that impacts somebody, whether it's a neighboring property or somebody at the camp or a communicable disease outbreak, that these providers need to be responsible. Now, we all know that anybody can sue anybody for anything. So if something does occur in a negative way, granted, the first place you're going to look is the city because we have the deep pockets that are slowly getting sewn shut. And without any type of accountability or responsibility on the providers' part, there's nowhere else for these people to go to look for some sort of, I can't think of a word. I just lost it. Anyway, so my, I'm going to put a motion out and I'm willing to listen to some modifications as to the degree. But my motion is I move to direct the city manager to require rest stop providers to purchase liability insurance to protect the city with the amount of insurance at least equal to the limits of civil, city liability under the Oregon Tort Claims Act.
Second.
Moved in second. Before launching into that discussion, I just want to ask Glenn, do you have a response to the need for this or not the need for this?
As your lawyer, it's always great if you require liability insurance so that there's somebody else that we can say, you guys go defend and you indemnify. And if there's a judgment, you pay it. Here, the trade-off for the council is if you require this, there may be some providers who say, I was willing to be the provider, but if I'm going to have to shell out dollars for an insurance policy like this, then I'm not willing to do it. And so again, it's a policy call. As I talked about it with staff, my conclusion was, well, our office, because I talked to a couple of people in my office about this, is that the risk is fairly small. In terms of the type of risk that Mike was talking about, you know, if there's a sprinkler head up above, we already have that potential liability because the sprinkler head is already up there. And if somebody was going across the site and tripped or fell and hurt themselves on it, we're already responsible for that. Other than that kind of liability, the damage liability from something we previously had done that created a risk, we think the risk is pretty small. One, because we don't, based on what happened out at Occupy Eugene, what happened there when we analyzed the possible claims that somebody might have thought about filing against the city. So based on that kind of analysis, based on the likelihood that somebody might sue us, decided that the risk isn't very good. And when balanced against what you lose by requiring the liability insurance, which is you may lose some providers who are no longer willing to be providers, it was, we analyzed it and said the balance favors not requiring the liability insurance. It's a, it's a question for the council as to the risk that you want to take. And George is absolutely right. There's the potential that somebody does sue us. And if they do, then we have to defend it. If there's liability insurance, we don't. The counter is if you require the liability insurance, you may not get the program because you may not have providers who are willing to step up.
So we have
If I can speak to the motion.
Yes.
In my opinion, I think, and I was going to say this earlier, but in my opinion, I think we're extremely lucky that we didn't get, the city did not get sued by somebody as a result of all the negative acts that were occurring within Occupy Village at Seventh and Jefferson or Occupy Eugene, excuse me. Now, the Opportunity Village, we're requiring them to have some sort of liability insurance. St. Vincent's and the churches have a certain level of liability insurance anyway, as their organization probably requires. You know, years and years ago, I was involved in an athletic endeavor that raised monies for a nonprofit organization that was a high-risk physical activity. We were able to go out into the community and find an insurance underwriter to work with us to get an insurance policy to cover not only the participants, but the use of the facilities that we use and everything else at a very low, low minimal cost. So I think the, the cost factor is not there. And what I'm concerned about is something of a lack of supervision or a lack of the providers following their own rules and regulations that allows something to occur or something out of their control that occurs that they should have been aware of or could have prevented. And that's my concern. So if we can reword that to lower the cost of the insurance under the Oregon Tort Claims Act, I'm okay with that.
So in the prior conversation, I had Claire and Greg and George Brown in the queue. But now we're dealing with this. So I'm going to set that aside. And I saw Claire wanted to be in the queue on this one. Does anybody else want, and George Brown wants to be in the queue on this one. And Alan wants to be in a queue on this one. Okay, Claire.
Yeah. So while I appreciate the idea of due diligence and accountability, I can't support this motion. I really worry about adding this burden to volunteer providers for this very short-term conversation. And frankly, I think as a city, we are at much greater risk for being sued for not being in compliance with current Ninth Circuit Court rulings than we are for being sued by a homeless person who might become injured on one of these sites. If these folks were in a position to sue the city, they would have probably sued us already for not providing sufficient emergency shelter while we're enforcing a camping ban or for all the illnesses, injuries and victimization that they've suffered while trying to sleep on public land. So I appreciate the idea, but I'm not going to support the motion.
George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I, you know, I, I can't support this motion today. Certainly Council Surratt made a very compelling statement and it amplified my thinking and put it much better than was in my brain up here. But I, you know, I just need to learn more about it. I can't support it today because I don't know, I don't know how much, first of all, I'm not, I didn't get a chance to read the Oregon Tort Claims Act to understand that and what, what the liability limits are. And I do read stuff like that, but I haven't had time to look at that. And I haven't had time to know what the, what that means in terms of cost of policies for the different sites, of how many people are there. And would it be too much of a burden that would discourage providers from operating the camps? Because it makes no sense to have these rest stops if, if no providers can afford to actually oversee them. Now, I'll just, I will say that about a year and a half ago, I visited all of the tent cities up in Seattle and Portland. And they all had some form of insurance. But I don't, you know, I thought, oh, great. You've got some kind of liability insurance. That's great. I didn't ask them how much. I didn't go into detail. I was there mainly just to see the camps and how they generally were, were run and speak to the responsible parties at each of the camps. And so I just, you know, I'd like to maybe know or learn. I'm sure I could email or call these folks. What, what is the policy at Opportunity Village in Portland? Or I mean, here, what are they paying now? And what's Dignity Village and R2D2 in Portland doing? And what are the tent cities in Seattle, T3 and T4 doing? I just need to learn a lot more about this. I will be able to support it today, but I may in the future once I get more information.
Alan.
So I don't think it's a bad idea. We already require it for Opportunity Village and car camping and things like that. And, but I'd need more information. One of the people has said, I concur. I would like to know what kind of cost. It involves what the legal analysis other than what you just gave us, more in-depth, more thoughtful, a staff recommendation, other examples of where other people have done it besides here, like in Portland. So I would need, I would like to see that kind of analysis. So I will move to table until we, staff brings that analysis back.
Second.
Move to table is non-debatable, right? So we moved in seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three in opposition. One, two, three, four, five. It does not pass. I'm going to let Mike and Chris have their turn. They're in the queue. And in the meantime, I'd ask George to consider whether he wants to modify his motion to give staff time to, instead of the motion to do it, to give the motion to have them bring back more materials to educate the council. So think about that one. Mike.
Thank you. I was going to offer that friendly as well, that perhaps it could be much like we do with a work session opportunity to say, direct the manager to bring us back the specifics of what a requirement like that would look like to impose, if that's acceptable.
I'm agreeable to that. And just so everybody knows, I did not get this until yesterday afternoon when I got home from some, several meetings. So it's not like I tried to put it out at the last minute. Everybody knew ahead of time I was going to be bringing it up to the table.
And as the second, I agree as well.
So Glenn, maybe you can work on some language around to modify that motion for just bringing back stuff as opposed to the action. And Chris, did you have something you want to say?
I wasn't finished, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say that I'm hopeful that we all pass this, however, though, because as we're setting up a place and a location for an activity very intentionally, it would seem to me that if Glenn is correct, that the risk is very low, then certainly the cost would be very low for the insurance. But he didn't say that there was no risk. And for us to create an environment intentionally that has risk and not address it would be irresponsible. So I'm hopeful that this passes.
And Chris.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the, of that change to the motion. I do know that I had a conversation with the Dignity Village folks in Portland. They are, as you know, required to purchase liability insurance because that's more of a permanent settlement, just as our Opportunity Village is. I believe their general purpose liability policy cost them about $137. I'm not sure if that was quarterly, annually. I don't think it was monthly. It's not a huge amount of money, but for something like that, I think it's a significant safeguard to have in place. It's a different conversation about the kind of temporary shelter we're talking. So I really appreciate the notion of bringing it up. We absolutely do not want to be exposed. But I think having some more information about what liability might look like, how it might play out, this particular situation of temporary shelter could really help a lot. So I will absolutely support this modified motion because I do think we want some information about what exposure even might potentially be.
Betty.
As for risk, there's nothing that we do that doesn't have some risk. There is no, no way of guaranteeing, no risk for anything. I would prefer just to vote this down today. I think the volunteers, we are not running these rest stops. The city is not running them. The volunteers who are doing it are already spending money for sanitation. And I don't know, and they're, and they're giving their time. And what even, what may seem like a small amount to some people may, may be a big enough amount that they can't do it. Thank you.
We'll find out.
And I guess my only question is what, what kind of different kind of, of liability insurance, so to speak, if you chose to go down that path, would there be for something that you're only foreseeing is going to be there for a few months as opposed to something that has a longer lifespan? Because all the things that George mentioned, that he had looked at, all had our long lifetime, have a life, sort of an endless horizon. So this is different. And I'd really want to balance that with the cost and assess it in that way. But we have a motion that, you're going to redo your motion?
Yes. And I think it covers the intention that Mike also. So it's, I move to direct the city manager to bring back to council proposal to require rest stop providers to purchase liability insurance to protect the city with the amount of insurance at least equal to the limits of city liability under the Oregon Tort Claims Act. Now, if I give a second, I've got a couple of questions.
That was the revised emotion?
That was revised. That's the revised.
The friendly, so yeah, it's already in.
So you're still talking about bringing back your proposal? Is you're still?
Second agrees.
Yes.
So I tried to make minimal changes, but if that motion passes, I understand the intent of the council is actually something broader than that. And what we'll bring back to you is, so if, you know, what would different policy limits be? And it may not be the policy limits in the Tort Claims Act, which are for a personal injury are about $600,000 for a single claimant. We'll look for something that's less expensive than that. And so we'll give you the range of options and the range of information that you've talked about. I was just trying to make simple changes.
And the question is, is there any way that it fits under something we already have?
What do you mean?
The city. It is our property.
The city?
Yes.
Well, the city's self-insured. So in a sense, we already have insurance. But what I understand the intent of the motion is, is to make the responsibility and accountability be on the provider and some other insurance so that the city isn't incurring the, the defense costs or the possible judgment if somebody gets injured.
Right. I see George Brown and then Alan.
So the way I understand Council Polling's motion is to bring back a requirement that the interns be produced with options of what the different policies are. I mean, I want that, I, I'll probably maybe support this, but I want to get the information first before we see a requirement is all. But I suppose we could But I suppose we could do that, we could listen to all the information, and then we have a vote on whether to.
Kind of get involved in the same thing.
Maybe it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Alan?
I'll support it if the intent of staff is to bring back types of premiums, the cost of the premiums, the legal analysis of our liability, and other examples of what's been done, which is probably the first one, types of liability. And then, I'll put you on the spot, and that's staff recommendation.
I don't think he's asking for that right this moment.
No, but he's asking, will we have a staff recommendation? I'm not sure yet, because I think our initial work through was sort of our initial staff recommendation, so I suppose if something comes out of all of that is different. Yeah, then, so that's why I'm hesitating, so I don't know.
Because you have an existing staff recommendation that this isn't necessary.
Yes.
That's correct.
So maybe, so if you came up with something that would change that, you'd let us know?
Yes, well, our intent will be is to provide all this information to you, for you can make your call on that. I don't, I'm not sure about what we would say as a staff recommendation or not, so I just want to.
Yeah, okay.
Not set an expectation we may not meet.
Include what you were thinking about, having staff bring back George?
I didn't hear the last.
Is that, what they said was, and the things that I said included in what you thought they'd bring back as?
Yes.
Okay.
The different options and costs and periods, yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this, so all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposition, two, it passes. All right. Now I'm going to go back to my initial list for the, back to the initial conversation that we were having before the motion. And I've got Claire and Greg and George Brown in that, and I'm actually going to, in that case, I'm going to move Greg up to the first, because he hasn't talked, so.
Claire, go over for me. But anyway, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. One of the things I want us to keep in mind is that we do have a parallel process going at the Human Services Commission right now with the establishment of a poverty and homelessness board that will effectively, hopefully effectively, move not only the conversation forward, but some significant initiatives that will address poverty and homelessness, and look at specific preventive measures that we can put in place to address those issues. I know that, and I, you know, very appreciative of the work that Counsel Pryor has done around this, but I don't want us to be, and I know that you're working with Steve Minnella and his staff to kind of coordinate this, but I want to make sure that we understand that we don't get too far over our skis on this. And in a lot of instances over the last, I guess, 11 months that I've been on as council, I think we have extended ourselves over our skis a little bit, and we have not done the kind of coordination and collaboration necessary with the parties who are responsible jurisdictionally for addressing homelessness. The people we write the checks to at the county that are, you know, funding those programs currently that are now in place to address various aspects of homelessness, that needs to be probably expanded at some, to some degree, to be able to incorporate the concepts of developing a permanent homeless shelter, as well as more programmatic initiatives that will prevent homelessness versus us being in a reactive mode where we are reacting to what the situation is on the street all the time. So I just want us to keep those things in mind as we move forward.
Claire? Thank you, I really appreciate those comments from Counsel Evans, that's great. Just a couple of questions and then some comments. Michael, thanks for the report. Are you able to share any more about the nature of those incidents at Opportunity Village?
No, I don't have any detailed, how I understood it, besides the one person who escorted out, they're all relatively minor and settled amongst the community. I don't know the details of each individual.
Minor arguments between someone?
It was nicely reported, it made things look a lot worse on the report than it actually was, as far as I understood it.
So that's available in the Opportunity Village's report itself?
Quarterly report, yeah.
And has that been shared with the council?
We just recently received that, we could share that with council.
Yeah, I think it would be important for the council to see that report. And do you have an idea when and if the council will get a report on the CDBG funding recommendations and the work that's going on around that?
Yeah, we're just beginning our process with the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, and we run the public hearing through there, but that definitely comes back to council, and I'd be more than happy to provide an interim update, once we know more of the funding sources or some, maybe potential applicants or something along those lines.
And we're just knowing that that will be reported to the council in some routine way?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I'm really glad to hear that Dr. Lutke has been engaged in this. I think it's, was a real missing element, that he never went out to the Bertelson Wetlands, as far as I know, to see the conditions that folks are living in out there, to kind of have some perspective on how things can get when folks are hidden away. And then, one of the things I've been hearing from folks, as we've discussed, this rest stop program and setting up kind of temporary places for people to be, is folks are feeling like, well, you're just finding a spot for them to sleep, and you're not connecting them with any kind of services, because that's not part of the advocacy that we're getting at the council. So I just wanted to ask you to confirm that we are supporting, in large part through the Human Services Commission funding, which, referencing our budget discussion, is a big chunk line item in our budget that says "human services funding." So for folks who are wondering what that is, it's funding that goes primarily to the Human Services Commission, to then be distributed out to various social service agencies who do a lot of work around homeless prevention and other types of services. So I just wanted to ask you, Michael, if you could confirm for me that we are supporting through our own funding, support services to help connect people with employment training?
Through our allocation to the Human Services Commission? I don't know exactly what level of funding we do.
Well, no, I don't want you to get into the details of our funding. Is there a social service provider in town who's providing employment training services to folks?
Oh, there are several, yeah.
And how about education support?
Yeah, so.
And financial education and credit repair support?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and then helping folks access public benefits like VA and Social Security disability benefits that they're entitled to?
Certainly.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get that on the record, that there's a lot of work going on in relationship with trying to find rest stop locations and Opportunity Village, that we are actually connecting those folks with services, trying to move them out of homelessness and into a better situation. So thanks very much. I look forward to working on what our role as a council and a council committee and how that will fit in with what is being mandated by HUD and what HSE is creating. I think there's a lot of good coordination that is happening, and that I look forward to continuing to that work.
I've got George Brown and then Chris Pryor, and then Mike.
Thanks, Mayor. We started on the conversation about the motion and kind of went down another path, and so it took me a second to remember what I wanted to speak about. First, I believe that I just wanted to make a brief comment addressing Counsel Clark's concern about, you know, potential infectious diseases and sanitary, you know, conditions arising. I know that the other places that I visited are routinely, but unannounced, visited by, you know, their equivalent of the county health officials and fire marshal and police department. They drop in, it's a very friendly casual, because there have not been these problems that could happen, and so, but they do regularly visit and to try to, you know, they're looking to head off any potential problems, and so I imagine it would probably be a kind of a similar arrangement here, would be my guess. Thank you.
I want to interject that, is it Lutke? Lutke, Lutke? He actually took the initiative to set up a meeting with us, to come over and meet with us and talk with us about potential health issues that might occur. And so we had a very good conversation about that, and out of that steps were taken to connect people and to get information out. And I know they went out to help people at Opportunity Village to figure out how to set things up in the best healthy, most healthy circumstances, too. So I think that's an illustration of what you were talking about, George, that they are taking the initiative to do what they're supposed to do around health services and the.
Maybe you should mention who he is. Maybe you should mention who he is.
What is it, official chief health, county health officer, or something?
Health officer.
Public health officer, yeah. Chris?
Thank you. I'm really pleased that our two representatives of the Human Services Commission talked about the essential importance of coordination. It really serves nobody's good if we duplicate anything. And I think the continuum of care organization that the county is setting up is extremely important for a variety of reasons, not only from a coordination standpoint, but also from a strategic level and dealing with this issue in the holistic way that is essential. There are a lot of people who are engaged in this area, and if they're all working in separate circles, not a lot's going to get done. There's, and I think the whole secret here is to be able to link all of these dots together so that you do have a continuum that gets you from the beginning through to sustainability at the other end. And we only have, I think, a small part of that, but the challenge for me is we've not defined what that small part is. We don't really know exactly how that fits into that larger continuum. So I agree, we don't want to create something big that duplicates. We want to, I think, have some conversation about exactly what our place is in that larger continuum. And I think the proposal that I had put together way back in September may look like something that's bigger than perhaps even needs to be at this point. My ongoing conversations with Steve Minnella and the folks at the Human Services Commission indicates there may be less of a need for us to create something this big, and we may be able to focus in even more. Because I think focus is really the most important element for the city of Eugene to decide where it fits in. My original impetus was, one, from the Opportunity Eugene conversations that we had, but a second one was the sense that we were implementing all these things, put this thing in, put this thing in, put this thing in, without a sense of where they were going, or how they fit together, or how they were on that larger continuum. The committee that I'm talking about, which is for another day, is a way for us to get that clarity. And so the notion of us talking about it here, deciding exactly what our role is, figuring out how this committee can accomplish that at the tactical ground level, but still coordinate with this continuum of care effort, I think is the secret, that's the goal. It's not to make it big, it's to make it focused, and that we are very clear as to what is and what is not our role. Because I'm not sure right now if we are clear on what is and what is not our role. We're doing stuff, and it's spending money, but it still isn't working towards a mutually agreed or defined sense of purpose, of what the outcome is going to be. Why are we doing this? We have a number of whys, and some are short-term whys, some are long-term whys, but they're not necessarily whys to tap into that continuum, and that's really what we want to get to. So I look forward to the conversation for how we can make sure that level of coordination's maintained. But we are very clear, as we do this stuff, exactly why we're doing it and what our outcome is.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris really hit on most of, he said it in a different way than I would have said it, but the thinking is what I wanted to express. To, I think you got 80% of what I wanted to express. The other part is this, I actually think we are, we're doing things, it's concerning to me, I'm not quite as happy about what I see as you are. I see us expending a great deal of effort in a vacuum, or, you know, independently, rather than jointly on what is a regional problem. I see us trying to create city-centric, you know, policy framework around addressing an issue that's a regional issue, that we shouldn't be spending that time, money, and effort doing into the exclusion of the regional work and the regional solution. There are issues, while this one is a very important issue, obviously, it's very timely, and it's very critical. For me, economic development is a much more important issue. If people are working, you don't have this problem. And we're certainly not looking at a citywide policy framework for economic development to the degree that we're spending this kind of, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate your input, too. To the degree that we are.
Sorry.
It's all right, it's great. I don't see us doing it to the same level that we are with issues like this, and I wish we were. So it has me actually kind of concerned, I wish we would, we would play better with others. The only way we'll solve some of these larger regional problems is if we do, and I think you're right about that.
Betty?
Thank you. I raised my hand for the purpose of saying, pointing out that the workforce partnership is working all the time, along with Lane Community College, to help people find work, to help them become qualified for work if there is work. But I then, after what's said in the interim, I wanted to say, I'm very concerned about duplication among various entities. I was on the Human Services Commission for a few years, and it seemed to me that there was some, a lot of overlap and duplication, and I'd like to see more clarity and more, some oversight, I guess. That's all, thank you.
So with apologies to Mike again.
No, it's okay.
Saying what came out of my mouth.
I've never done that, ever.
I know, I know. But I did want to say this, that ever since I've been mayor, one of the things that bothered me is that we seem to rise to discussions, and it's been on our plate because it's been so present since Occupy Eugene, but the fact is, prior to that, our attention to homeless issue was very hit and run, that we would have a crisis for a moment, kind of respond, and then it would sort of fade away from the consciousness of the council. And I felt like that kept us from really understanding where we were and where we wanted to go, and to seriously work on it on an ongoing basis. So I have felt for a long time that there needed to be a part of us that sort of kept out on the plate all the time, because I don't see it going away anytime, anytime soon. And I agree about the coordination, and I think that those things need to happen, but I also think that it would be helpful to us, in terms of money, in terms of everything else, if we looked out there and said, well, we've looked at this, and we said, this is the thing that we think could move the dial the most now, and we want to concentrate on doing that. And that's what we want to tell the larger body, that we're, this is a piece we're going to take on. So I think that's what you're, you're working on through what you're proposing here, Chris. So I think there's room for that. The thing you don't want to do, and I agree with Betty on this one, is to have everybody spinning the same dials at the same time. You really want to figure out what your, what our piece of it is, and how we can contribute to making a difference for what's happening in the whole system. So I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation, and I think we are right on time to end our meeting. Thank you all very much.